All right, we've got five. That's enough for a meeting, isn't it? All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 7:03 PM. Let me call to order the meeting of the Merrimack Planning Board for May 18th, 2021. Boy, it's good to be back in the room and not on Zoom. I haven't been here, I haven't been in this room in over a year. Uh, well, I did the annual meeting with the town council, so I came and sat over in that chair, but first time I've been back behind the desk. Glad to do it. Um, okay, and I'm glad not to have to read that dumb script and all of a sudden, it's just a happy day. Our next meeting after tonight is June 1st, 2021 at 7:00 PM in this Matthew Thornton Room. Let me appoint Nelson into a voting position in for, uh, let's see, Lynn's space. And, uh, let's see, uh, let me remind everybody that's going to address the board to, um, introduce yourself and speak clearly into the microphone, make sure the microphones are turned on. And with that, we're finished with our call to order, and it's our planning and zoning administrators' report. Uh, Robert, what do you have for us?
Just tonight, the staff recommends that the Vaughn lot line adjustment is not of regional impact.
What's the will of the board with respect to that recommendation?
We move, Mr. Chairman, that that is not a regional impact.
Turn your microphone on.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the, uh, uh, request, this is, this is for Turbine?
Brett Vaughn.
For Brett Vaughn? Oh, okay.
Yeah, for Brett Vaughn's.
Brett Vaughn's project is not of regional impact.
Is there a second for Alistair, uh, for, oh, sorry, Nelson's motion? Get so used to saying that.
Oh, second?
Um, second by, uh, member Anketel. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to agree with the staff's recommendation. Man, I was gonna go down the road of doing a roll call vote, and I'm so used to Alistair making motions that I was, man, thinking ahead.
You're gonna have to be retrained.
I guess so. Um, are there any other matters, Robert, for the planning and zoning administrators' report?
Nothing this evening.
Do any members of the board have any questions for the staff? No, thank you for that.
Not at the moment. I, I will have something I'll bring up at the discussion at the end for the staff.
Uh, excellent. Item three on our agenda is James Turbine as the applicant and, uh, and the owner. Review for consideration of a conditional use permit to construct a detached accessory dwelling unit, uh, or ADU. The parcels located at 35 Tinker Road in the R1 Residential by Soils District, Tax Map 2C, Lot 14. Case Planning Board 2021-14. And we have a request in our package, uh, from Michael Petrovic indicating that, let's see, is this the right one? Yes. Uh, that the applicant would like to withdraw this planning board application and resubmit it following the ZBA application prior to the deadline for the June 30th ZBA hearing. Since it is a withdrawal and not a continuance, then no vote is required. It doesn't require our action or acknowledgement. Robert, is there anything else that we should know about that one?
Actually, is, if they get the variances they're going for, then this board will not see that application again.
Then this board will not see the application again?
Correct.
Okay, so if they get the variances they need, we won't see them even though that's what they indicated. Okay, very good. Item five, uh, four on our agenda is Brett Vaughn, Inc. as the applicant and Brett W. Vaughn Revocable Trust and Chad Clark as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of a lot line adjustment. The parcels are located at 8, 10, 12, and 14. Whitetail Ridge in the R1 Residential by MAP District, Tax Map 4A, lots 23, 23.3, 23.4, and 23.5. It's Case Planning Board 2021-15. Robert, is there anything we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
Nothing really fancy about this one. It's a basic straightforward lot line adjustment in a couple of different places. Uh, applicant's surveyor, Mr. Plouffe, is here to present the application. I'm sure he can go through the details of it.
Excellent, all right. Please introduce yourself and tell us about the lot line adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Mike Plouffe. I'm out Lance of Air with Fieldstone Land Consultants. I'm here tonight to represent a lot line adjustment application, uh, between Brett Vaughn, who is the owner of Tax Map lots 4A, 23.3, 23.4, and 23.5, and with Chad Clark, who is the owner of Lot 4A, 23. The purpose of this plan is to revise the common lines as shown in order to accommodate an existing leach field that's utilized by 4A, 23. At the time of the original subdivision, uh, for Black Oak Road, uh, it was thought that the, the existing leach field for 4A, 23 was a lot closer to the existing house and structure. Um, but, uh, as of recently, it came to light that the leach field was actually down the slope, uh, further, uh, than anticipated. So this, this is the main reason for the lot line adjustment. The lot line adjustment's gonna involve, um, multiple lots, and the reason for that is in order to meet, uh, the zoning requirement. So in order to meet the zone requirements for R1 Zone, we're proposing, and I don't, I guess you guys can see that, the, uh, the parcel, I'll start with parcel A. Uh, parcel A, uh, will be added to Lot 4. And then parcel B, which is the pink area, will be added to Lot 5. And then that will allow parcels C and parcel D to be added to Lot 4A, 23 in order to accommodate the, the leach field area right here. So basically, I, that's it in a nutshell. All the lots are over 100,000 square feet for this zone. That's why we had to do the multiple lot line revisions in order to accommodate this. I know that there's some staff review comments that I can address now, or I can address if the board should choose, uh, later.
Okay. Can you go over quickly the additions and subtractions for parcels A, B, C, and D again, and let me know what we're doing? Just go over that one more time?
Sure. Um, let's see if I can zoom in here. Okay, so I'll start with parcel A. Uh, parcel A is the yellow triangular area right here. That's being added to Lot 4, which is this air, this lot right here, in order to maintain over 100,000 square feet. This lot will be 100,003 square feet after the lot line revision. Parcel B is 2,634 square feet, which is the pink area triangle. That's being added to Lot 5 to make sure that we have the 100,000 square feet with that lot as well. Because we're taking away area parcel C and parcel D from both of those lots. We have to replace it in order to make sure that we're, uh, meeting zoning. So parcel C, which is 3,192 square feet, will come out of, uh, Lot 4 and be conveyed to 4A, 23. And parcel D, which is 2,734 square feet, will come out of Lot 5 and be, can also be conveyed to 4A, 23. So the end result will be this, this kind of notch right here, which goes around the existing leach field, which is right here. And there's plenty of room to, to get around the leach field and if you need to maintain it or whatever.
Okay. Thank you for going over that again. I understood the second time. Um, okay, so, uh, board members, the first, um, uh, task for us to tackle is to determine whether the application's complete. Does the board have any questions that would provide that information if necessary, and if not, what's the will of the board? Nelson?
I just have a question, uh, with regard to what's called Black Gro- Oak Road. On this map is called Whitetail Drive on the other maps. Which is correct?
It's, it says Whitetail, um, the original subdivision had this as Black Oak Road, and when we were working on this drawing, uh, we didn't change the road name. So that's a, a comment that staff picked up on, and we will definitely revise the road name.
And just to add on that, the original intent, I think, was to call it Black Oak Road, but when they were doing the 911 addressing process, that was deemed to be too close to other names, so they had to change it to Whitetail Ridge.
Yeah, okay, that, that explains that, and it's been picked up, so then, then, uh, what was your request, Mr. Chairman, to accept this as complete?
E- either that or ask any questions necessary to supply the board with such information as it might find to make the application complete.
I would make a motion to make it complete if that's the, if everyone's okay with that.
Yeah, that's what's in order. Okay, is there a second for Nelson's motion to determine the application's complete?
Second the motion, Mr. Chair.
Motion and a second. Um, any further discussion? All in favor of finding the application complete, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to determine that the application's complete. Um, the second order of business, um, is to take a look at waivers. Uh, there is a lot line adjustment, the, the board can determine that waivers are not necessary, um, under 407. Doesn't appear that the applicant's requesting any waivers, are there?
No, there are none.
Robert, okay, so, nothing to deal with waivers. Um, does the board have any general questions of the applicant? If not, we can take on some public testimony. No questions of the applicant. Are there any abutters or interested citizens who wish to weigh in? Seeing none, open and close the public hearing. The only question I had in my note is, uh, whether there are certain easements affecting these parcels as to drainage or construction or temporary or utility or anything going on that are gonna be affected or changed by this.
In fact, uh, there are. There's slope and drainage easements. Uh, however, there's, the location of the easements are gonna stay, back where they were for the original subdivision. Uh, they will be, they will need to be revised, um, with the value of the, cause you can see where parcel A is right here. Um, there's more of the slope, sorry.
Like, can you point out the slope and drainage? Give me, orient me to the easements you're talking about?
Sure, there's, uh, right here, this is a, uh, can you see that, uh, the cursor?
I cannot.
I can see it, yeah.
I know, there's another screen there.
It's kind of a, anyhow, okay, there's the slope along Black Oak Road, there's a, there's a slope easement running, um, offset from the road.
Okay.
Like 30 feet, and then it, from this point right here, it runs up the drainage easement, runs up halfway up the parcel A yellow line or yellow triangle, and then crosses into Lot 3 and then comes back. And right here, slope and drainage easement is labeled. Um, those easements are not, the physical locations are not changing. But when the, when this lot gets conveyed, um, the slope and drainage easement that affects this lot, the, the geometry, the bearing and distance will change for that easement. So we'll have to do that in this situation right here. And, and it's a little triangle, like, right here, right above the black on Black Oak Road.
Yeah.
We held the, uh, the, the, the frontage point, but it kind of tapers back in the triangle, so there will, there will be some slight modifications to them.
Yep. So, uh, I understand the notion that the same bit of land is needed for slopes and drainage. But as to easements, easements always have a benefited parcel and a burdened parcel. Somebody granted it from an abutting parcel. Um, where, where were they granted from and who were they granted to? And has all that been sorted out in terms of what the language in the easements have to say?
I, uh, I did speak to, um, my client Brett Vaughn, and to, uh, he spoke to his attorney today. Uh, there's a question on the, on the staff review about, um, the recording book and page for the original slope and drainage easements. And it turns out, uh, I checked the registry, those easements, there's, there's like 12 of them, uh, were never recorded. They were submitted along with the Mylar of the plan. The plan is recorded, that's in the registry. But as of right now, um, we don't know the status of those easements. So if, they could be at the town, if they're not the town, the attorney said that she would, uh, reissue them, um, in order to get recorded.
Robert, do you have in here a condition of approval that says to satisfy our town's attorneys as to the status of the easements?
There is a standard condition that they'd have to record any required easements, so this can get lumped under that.
Okay. Yeah, whatever, whatever satisfies our town's attorney i- in terms of that. They're probably not recorded. If Brett still owns all these lots, you can't convey the easement until you convey the lot out to its new owner. Um, so it wouldn't, there wouldn't be any place to deed it to until you get rid of the lot. And he can't ease, is not, there's, um, legally, the, the concept of having easement over your own property doesn't exist, it's annulity, so that's probably why they aren't recorded. But when they do get recorded, they need to show the new areas and descriptions, not the old ones.
Right.
Um, but as long as there's a condition that you satisfy our town's attorneys, I can't think that we need to take any other deeper dive into that. Um, anybody have any other questions about the application, the lot line adjustment? If there's no questions, is the board prepared to take final action on the application? Who would like to make a motion? Nelson?
I will make motion to approve the lot line adjustment as presented.
Subject to the conditions in the staff's memo?
Pardon?
Subject to the conditions in the staff's memo?
In the staff memo, yes, and the legal issues raised by you, which I think are covered by the staff's memo.
I think so too. Is there a second for Nelson's motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Healy. Um, with that in mind, uh, if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0. Uh, thank you very much for the presentation, and you are all set. You'll get a letter from the town as to the details, and go forward from there. Item six on our agenda, I'm sorry, item five on our agenda, is Merrimack Parcel A LLC as the applicant and Merrimack Parcel A LLC and Slate Merrimack Acquisitions LLC as the owner in its review for consideration of an amendment to an approved site plan requesting to waive the requirement for the installation of a sidewalk per Section 4.20 and Section 7.05, Point D, Point 19 of the previous regulations in effect of the time of the original approval. The parcel's located at 10 Premium Outlets Boulevard in the I-2 Industrial and Oqfer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area. Tax Map 3C, Lot 191.2 and 191.2U102U4, Case Planning Board 2021-16. Uh, Robert, I see on the table before me that we've got a request from the applicant to continue this one until June 15th, is that right?
That's correct.
Um, is there anything else that we should know before we take up the continuance?
Uh, we had a good productive conversation with the applicant today, and they're going to take the time to try to revise their plan to come up with a, a solution to keep the sidewalk on their property rather than eliminate it entirely.
Okay, thank you for that, Robert. Um, with that in mind, um, board members, what's the will of the board with respect to the request for a continuance to June 15, 2021?
So moved.
Okay, uh, so we're moving to continue it to June 15, 2021 at 7:00 PM in this Matthew Thornton Room. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Counselor Healy, count, count it over here. Got two seconds at a time. Uh, okay, uh, with that in mind, uh, any further discussion? If there's none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to continue that one for the next time around. Or two times around from now. Uh, okay, item six, uh, on our agenda, Cre- Cremeux French Patissserie, I'm gonna get that wrong. LLC as the applicant and owner, and Penachuck Square LT Limited Partnership as the owner. Review for acceptance and consideration of final approval of a waiver of full site plan review to add an outdoor seating area. The parcel's located at 707 Milford Road, Unit 3C in the C2 General Commercial and Oqfer Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area. Tax Map 2B, Lot 360, Case Planning Board 2021-17. Robert, is there anything that we need to know before we hear from the applicant?
So this is another simple straightforward application. The applicant is just looking to have three outdoor tables, total of up to six outdoor seats. Um, usually when we do these, we require some sort of markup of a plan. She did provide that. Uh, however, there's no notes that kind of accompany this with it. But in her application package, she did draw out a, a sketch of where the tables would be and provide a bunch of those notes. So with the board's blessing, staff's recommending that you can conditionally approve this and allow the applicant to work with staff to prepare that kind of site plan mockup that we usually have for that way, uh, it can be signed off when, when the approval time comes. We just kind of handle that in the background.
All right, thank you, Robert. Is the applicant here? Come on forward. First thing you gotta, you can sit down at the table. You don't have to stand up.
Um, at the table?
Yeah, if you're comfortable with that, yeah. You like standing? Okay, very good.
So I'm-
First, tell me how, how I mispronounced the name of your company.
Cremeux.
Hmm?
Cremeux.
Cremeux?
Yes.
All right, got it.
Uh, my name is Isabel Waddell. I'm one of the two owners of Cremeux. And, um, we are looking at basically having, uh, two to three tables outside just so we can provide, um, a pleasant environment for our customers to enjoy their pastries and their coffee and teas. Um, and, uh, this obviously would be a seasonal arrangement. We are well below the seating, um, allowed inside. Um, I know that there's sometimes question about additional parking if tables get added. Um, when the fire department came to look at how much seating we could get total, um, the number was 14. So considering the indoor seating and the outdoor seating, we're still below that number. So, um, in that regard, we wouldn't be needing, I guess, uh, any, uh, extra parking spots or anything of the sort.
Excellent. Thank you for the presentation. I also noticed, as the staff did as well, that your proposal doesn't take away any of your parking spaces either. This is a space that's not parking as it is today.
That's correct.
All right. Um, board members, the first task is to determine whether the application's complete. And we've had some comments from staff that although this is done a little bit differently than we normally see, the staff feels like they could successfully work with the applicant to fill in the details in a plan. With that in mind, it's up to the board to determine whether they think the applicant's complete. What do you, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put forth a motion saying the application is complete and, uh, ready to be moved forward on.
Is there a second?
A second.
Second. Uh, discussion? Nelson?
Question. Um, the sketch, the only sketch we got is this one, right? This one with, it shows the tables, but it doesn't show anything else. As I look at the site itself, there's kind of a little patio space there. It doesn't look like all three of these tables will fit. It looks like they'll be in the part, in the paved area, in the parking area. That's what I'm asking about.
So, um, this is actually to scale. Um, the third table does fit. Um, we, it's not out currently because we're still trying to maintain a six-foot, uh, distance between the back of the chair to the back of the other chair. Uh, so currently, under the conditional approval, uh, for COVID, we, um, we've had only two tables outside. We can definitely fit a third comfortably as well, especially with a limited number of seats.
Yeah, it's just that your sketch doesn't show the edge of pavement. And I think it's come into the paved area. By pavement, I mean the parking lot.
Right, so actually, this is a, a raised sidewalk. Um, that's quite large. Uh, we're an end unit. Um, so there is actually really no, not much walk-through, um, uh, on that sidewalk. Um, and really, the outline of the drawing is strictly the, uh, the sidewalk itself, not the road.
Okay, it does come eight feet out from the building then, is what you're saying?
That's correct. It's a very wide, uh, sidewalk.
Okay, I just took a windshield look at it. Look, look tight. Okay.
With that in mind, there's still a motion and a second on the table to find the application's complete. Is there further discussion onto that, or other things you want to talk about?
Uh, other things I just wanted to ask. I just want to be clear on what we're, what we're looking at. This, it's at the end of this building here with the yellow highlighted area?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Thanks, Neil. Other comments or questions as to the motion on the floor, which is whether we're, uh, application's complete? If there's none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? 5-0-0 to find the application complete. General discussion about the applicant, about anything that's going on with what's proposed. Neil?
Uh, yeah, uh, actually, you had answered the question, I think, when you, when, uh, Nelson, uh, addressed it, but there is a raised curb there on that end?
That's correct, yes.
And, uh, there's no foot traffic around that corner or anything like that, or?
Uh, no, because we're basically the last unit on that, uh, side of Penachuck Square. Um, so folks will park in front of our unit and walk in, so really the sidewalk is never used.
Okay. And I saw on the front that you had, uh, is, is proposed lighting?
No, there's no lighting.
Okay.
Uh, our bakery is only open 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, so for the time of the year that the tables will be out, the sun will be out, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? I know that the staff is gonna work with you to, um, put some details on the plan, but I want to ask some questions about this that I think I know the answers to, but just to make sure it's clear. This side where it says 14 feet with this dimension, is that's against the building?
That is.
And the other side over here, this is the parking lot?
That's, that's the road, actually.
Okay. Are you going to put umbrellas or anything, canopy or anything over the tables?
Um, we have two umbrellas.
They're affixed to the tables themselves?
Uh, yes, so they slide into, yes.
Okay, excellent. Um, have you tried to arrange the third table out there to see how close they are? How close would it be to the other tables?
So they will be about three feet, two and a half, three feet. Um, I would say, um, maybe two feet from the back of the chair to the back of the other chair.
Okay.
Two and a half feet.
That's good. Are there any other, um, features that you plan to add that would help to keep the cars and the people separate from each other? Just for safety purposes? I know the curb is a bit of a, uh, protection, but?
Uh, no, not at this time. Um, we have not, we thought the curb was going to be, uh, enough protection.
Okay. You may find when you talk to the fire department that they have a different view of it in terms of what they want to have. And the only reason why I want to discuss that here, I, I want to, I want you to follow their guidance, whatever it is. I think that's what the planning board would do, is defer to them as well. However, um, we want to make sure that whatever you do stays, um, uh, attractive and suitable to the development. And some of the things that you can use to block cars, like, uh, you know, uh, those concrete barrier jersey things, um, there's not suitable for a, you know, consumer restaurant environment. So whatever advice, if they ask you to put some kind of a physical barrier or something, um, work with our community development department to make sure it's something that is suitable and attractive to, um, you know, a retail consumer environment.
Sure.
Um, not, uh, you know, like a, I've seen in some places in Concord, the five gallon buckets full of concrete, like the Home Depot bucket, just with concrete in it, like, sitting out around the thing, and it just looks awful. Make sure, I, I'm sure you would already think of that in terms of your place and want to make it look nice, but apparently I would have thought that at the Pleat Pool in Concord too. And they got orange Home Depot buckets. Um, so, thank you for that. Um, I, I don't have any other questions or comments about the application. Does anyone else?
Hmm?
Okay, um, it's gonna sound silly for me to ask if there's anybody in the room that wants to comment, but I'm obligated to do so. So let's open up the comments to the public to see if there's any abutters. Is there anybody behind the scenes in the, no, we don't see any of those. Yes, that's it, unmute, unmute your phone, tell me what it is. Uh, okay, so we'll open and close the public hearing. Board members, are you prepared to take final action on the proposal? What's the will of the board? Neil, you got a hand up?
Uh, no.
Nelson?
Okay, I will make the motion to approv- approve this with the inputs, in, including inputs from staff on the details of the, uh, of the edge of pavement and so on to fix up the, fix up the presentation.
The plan a little bit?
Yeah.
Okay.
That, and, um, and also to coordinate with the fire department, uh, with regard to safety barriers if required, as required, to add that to the site plan.
Okay. Is there a second for Nelson's motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Healy. Um, I think when it comes to the safety plans, we looked at the, um, the Google Earth images of El Tapatio, which is in the same parking lot, and the- which is in the same parking lot, and the curb plus curb stops in front of it for the cars was all that was required of them in terms of a barrier. They have a little picket fence, but it's entirely decorative. But in terms of physical barriers, curbs with a curb stop a few feet out in front of it, all right. So maybe there's not a whole lot that needs doing. With that in mind, all in favor of granting conditional final approval, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero. Thank you very much, good luck, I look forward to stopping by and trying your rest, your, your shop.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Very good, thank you. Okay, it's a fast agenda, seven thirty. Item seven on our agenda is discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern. Nelson, you mentioned you had something.
Yes, I did have something, and it, it had to do mostly with the parcel A approval. And it, or the parcel A request brought it to my attention. And that is, it says in there, and this is something that we heard, I think, a week or two ago, maybe from Tim Thompson. But in, in the introduction to that parcel A request, it requests us to waive the requirement for the installation of a sidewalk per section four point two and section seven oh five D nineteen of the previous regulations in effect at the time of the original approval. And there was some mention that now that is no longer, would no longer be required. And I want to, I guess that sort of slipped by me because I happen to think sidewalks are a good idea in these, and I didn't realize we were eliminating that requirement somehow when we made those changes to the regulations about two months ago.
So how the regulations are laid out now is that it is board discretion on a project by project basis as to whether a sidewalk is required. So you guys can make that decision at the meeting itself every time a case comes forward, instead of an applicant for a lot line adjustment, say, needing to put in a waiver.
Okay.
In theory, it simplifies the process without them needing to request a waiver on the easier stuff, but the board can easily require one, just the same on any project.
Well, is it easy? I mean, we're now asking for things that aren't in our regulations, is that not right?
No, it's in our regulations that the board can require a sidewalk as it sees fit.
Does it say that?
Yes, it does.
Spell that out, I'm going to find.
I'll find the section for you.
Thank you, thank you, okay.
Just a question regarding that, if in fact the board decides that a sidewalk is what needed, can the applicant actually appeal that decision? And is there a process for that?
Can the applicant, I'm sorry, appeal that decision?
Appeal the decision to add the sidewalk?
Yeah, absolutely, anything that the planning board requires is appealable first to the ZBA and then to court, or actually, not first and second, depending on what it is, it's appealable in one direction or the other to either a court or to the ZBA. Depending on what it is that we've required of them. So yes, they can appeal those decisions.
There's no getting around that, whether it's in the regs or not.
No, I was just, you were saying it doesn't sound easy, and perhaps it isn't, because it becomes more objective versus, or subjective versus by law.
That's, yeah, that was what was bothering me.
I think that the way that our current regulations laid out, and Robert will find it here in a second, the board is tasked with determining whether the pedestrian traffic and those sorts of things in the area warrant the need or raise the need for it. And so if it wasn't plain in terms of the application as to what the need would be, we could certainly elaborate as to what those reasons were and, and that sort of thing, to make sure that you support your record and that if somebody did appeal it, they'd have something to know what in the world the board did that for. Robert, what'd you find?
So section three point oh eight, point C, point D, talks about sidewalks and it reads, "The board may require the construction of a sidewalk," oh, sorry, of sidewalks, "for pedestrian access to schools, parks, shopping areas, et cetera, particularly when such pedestrian facilities are recommended by the town's master plan or other bicycle pedestrian planning documents. Construction of sidewalks shall be in accordance with the subdivision regulations."
Okay, could I have those numbers again, you went fast.
Yep, it's section three point oh eight.
Yep.
Point C.
Yes.
Point D, and it appears on page twenty of the site plan regulations.
Page twenty, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, does anyone else have any other discussion or possible action regarding other items of concern? I would offer just one bit of information, although it's not necessarily complete. And that is, there at le, there is at least one candidate who's come forward to apply to the council for approval to be on our board. We tend to not talk about the person specifically until they've had their chance to have their interview process and go before the town council, but we may have a new, a new member of our board coming soon. With that in mind, we have other vacancies, so if anybody that's out there listening that has interest in what we do, come forward, volunteer, be a part of this board, be a part of the ZBA, be a part of any board, lots of opportunities.
Town center committee.
Town center committee is a good one. Okay, before we leave discussion and possible action regarding other items of concern, Counselor, a former Counselor Boyd, now State Representative Boyd, has asked to be either appointed or reappointed to the Nashua Regional Planning Commission. And so it is the board's task to, what is it, we make a recommendation that the selectmen decide, or we actually make the appointment directly?
I think the planning board actually has that authority in this case.
And so in this case, we would directly make that appointment if we so, see fit to do so. Is there any discussion about that? If not, Nelson?
Well, I just wanted to bring up one thing, and we've done this with other representatives to the Nashua Regional Planning Commission as we appointed them, and we've always asked that they give us some feedback, some updating on the.
Some news once in a while, yeah.
Yeah, and we never get it. I would just like to add that one more time to Mr. Boyd's appointment, should we decide to make that, and that he will, at least once, once a quarter or something, would give us some kind of a feedback as to what's going on with regional planning, because we don't have any other direct communication with that group.
I, I think it's a good suggestion, I'm not sure how often the NRPC meets, whether once a quarter is about the same number of meetings as they have, or?
I thought it was monthly, but I could be mistaken.
Either way, I, you know, making a request to someone to provide some feedback on a quarterly or semi-annually basis, I think it's great to news. I also think maybe at some point when we think about our organizational meetings or something, maybe we decide amongst ourselves how we're more proactive in reaching out to them to get the news, instead of waiting for it to come to us a little bit. You know, we can share that duty as well. Robert?
I just want to point out I did misspeak, it is a recommendation to the council.
Okay, so what's the will of the board with respect to making a recommendation for the appointment of Counselor, or former Counselor Bill Boyd to the National Regional Planning Commission?
I would move such, I'd make that motion.
Nelson Disco makes the motion to appoint Counselor, I gotta stop at the Counselor thing. Boyd, Bill Boyd, to the Regional Planning Commission, is there a second?
Second to motion.
Second by Paul. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero.
Should Counselor Healy abstain from that vote?
I'm just thinking that.
And do it at the council level?
I already voted on it once.
There you go. Okay, let's count this four zero one with one, with an abstention for the appointment. And we can, we wait till the councils acted and then communicate with Bill as to any feedback you can offer to the board from time to time on that. Okay, I don't have any other discussion on our action items, does anybody else? Then we're up to the item eight on the agenda, which is the approval of the minutes of May fourth twenty twenty one. What is the will of the board?
I have one issue, Mr. Chairman, if I can find it. It's on page nine. And, yeah, it's line, line thirty nine on page nine. "The board voted three one zero by roll call vote to grant conditional final approval to the amendment to the conditional use permit on a, on a motion made, and then the following conditions, blah blah." It doesn't say who made the motion, it doesn't say who seconded the motion, and it doesn't say how vote, who was the person who abstained or, or voted against. I, I just think there's some stuff missing there, that's in all the other motions made. We usually record who makes the motions and, and how the vote went.
Okay, that's true, normally we would, especially when it was a Zoom meeting by roll call vote, have that information to say who made the motion, who seconded it, and at least who the one dissenting vote was. Robert, are we able to obtain that information by rewatching the Zoom or?
We actually have, it was in the results document that we produced, it just apparently got dropped from the minutes document. I have it down here as the motion was made by Nelson, seconded by Neil, and Barbara voted in opposition.
Okay, I think that should be part of the record, thank you.
Yes, we'll get that added.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments about the minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes subject to the edit that Nelson suggested and the staff agreed to accommodate?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Disco. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero to approve those minutes. We've completed all of our business, and so with that in mind, we would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second to adjourn. All, yep, got the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All, any opposed? Any abstaining? Five zero zero to adjourn. I get to say, don't forget to turn your microphone off, which we normally do, and thank you all for the work. And, well, considering we started a couple late, forty one minutes, that's not terrible. Forty one minutes? It's been a long time since we had a really super short, like ten minute ones. Uh, no, our world record's a matter of a few minutes, but we've also had some long record, the longest possible.